This conference will now be recorded.
All this meeting is like. Information or candy, we excuse me. Down. Sorry, you got that in myself.
I can hear Robert.
Here.
Commissioner CPO.
Here.
Commissioner Gandy.
Here.
Commissioner Bo.
Here.
Commissioner White. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Put your head to pray with me, please. Don't I follow, Lord, we just thank you for this wonderful day. We're not, we just thank you for the blessing, the warm weather. Or God, we just thank you for the blessing of a new year. Or God, I just pray that you would watch over this commission and give us the foresight and knowledge to make the decisions that would be beneficial to our community. Or God, I just pray that you watch over our employees, our first responders, everyone that's connected with the city. And so you try to better the services for our community. I just pray that you would give them a positive attitude and the strength to do the job that is placed in front of them. Or God, I just pray for our state as a sixty day session approaches. And I just pray that you be with those legislators as they make decisions for our entire state. Or God, because their decisions affect us all. Or God, we just pray for our federal. Your preference, I can shoot the ball more than that. But Lord God, we just pray that you would introduce us a way that would be beneficial to us all. Again, Lord, we just thank you and we praise you, give you all the glory. Jesus Christ, then we pray.
Amen. When and place?
A pledge to leave it to the God. Space of prayer. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under. Invisible when the free and justice for all. I salute one, the state of New Mexico. The Z is the goal. Friendship among the ethnic cultures.
Maybe see.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Motion been made and seconded. Are there any changes, corrections? Seeing none. Ed.
Commissioner CPO.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner White. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of minutes December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second for iteration of the minutes. Any corrections? Any discussion? That'll do it. All right. James.
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Why? Yes. Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Commissioner CPO.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Before we do that. Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome to the new year. On a beautiful day to start our commission meetings on. So we're glad that you're here. We appreciate your time and your attendance here. And we will indulge to get through tonight as quickly as possible. All right. Mission staff report. Miss Shannon, do you like? Do you have anything?
Well, anything I'll be discussing tonight will be starting on the agenda.
Yeah. Miss Estman.
I do. Even taking into the GRT, going up on the GRT. I spoke to David Monti at the state. He said, we can go up point three percent. We have to do a new ordinance, which we've already done. Pretty often look at and see what we, what you base this stuff. And then, um, once it's approved by the commission, you'll have to advertise for ten days. And then it'll go starting in July.
Yes. What is your thinking on going on our CFR, on our grocery?
I think it's a good idea. It's not, you know, it's not like it's a big jump up. It's a.
Point three percent is pretty good.
I don't know. I think it's a good thing to do. It was, it's recommended by David Monti. Well, so. From the state.
Based off?
Based on.
Inflation.
Inflation is still here.
Good. Um.
Did he give you an average what it raises around? Like thirty thousand.
I think the last time was something like this. Scotty, you were mayor.
Yeah. At that point, we put on the three eights. Or when we lost through the. For the precious, whole harmless stuff. Yes. Yeah. And then we divided that up between the general fund and the.
You took.
Got the alley. And.
And the thing about that is to elaborate on what Mr. Gandy says. When we made that, when we made that cut and what we received. The bad part about. The state came back and made a new formula, which we put aside revenues for our own infrastructure. So what the state did is when they made their new formula, their money, they set aside for that point in EDC. So if you look at EDC, their coffins are, are hidden. They weren't getting in receiving the fundings because when they made that formula change, we had that money set aside for our infrastructure. And then that, that went into economic development. And because of that, followed under their new criteria. And so now we don't have that revenue, that revenue to stay. It's simply a set aside for our infrastructure. So like, for instance, what Tracy brought up, doesn't mean, what are we going to do with the revenue? If we get this revenue increase, I feel like we need to say to the public what we plan on doing with this. Because that's what I'm saying. So what are you going to do with all the three hundred and sixty thousand? Of revenue that you can possibly receive? What do you, what, what are your intentions? And that's what our intentions were. But in half, we put it in one pot, another pot, and sold it to the public. Uh, we're happy because it's supposed to go to infrastructure, which it did. Uh, but then the state made that formula change. Something we need to look to.
We started this budget year. Didn't know this item would really be here. But we started this budget year with expecting an average of six hundred and thirty thousand. I may miss that ten thousand either way. Uh, and we are currently, I know that the past four or five months, we were running in the nine hundred. Two, two of the months were over a million. And yes, I understand everything's gone out, but that would be a fifty percent increase in the average that we were expecting. And so being in a small community where our. I'm looking at it on the consumer side.
No. You missed your number.
Do what? No. If we were expecting six hundred thousand and now we're getting nine hundred thousand, that's a fifty percent.
No, 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 no. No, no.
Right, I understand, but what? I got. I was with her because I thought we were talking on the increase of three percent. Our point three percent increase on the six hundred thousand would have only been thirty thousand on the, on the. Because on a million. Yeah. You'd be at three hundred thousand, which would be half of what our normal grocery receipts are. But due to the fact that of our, our building and housing and roofing things, that, that stuff, that's going to drop. So you're going to see six hundred thousand. So where we were averaging six hundred thousand, if you put the point, point three percent on that, you only see us. So we'd be at six thirty. So that's where, that's where we got it. Six sixty.
That's where I got them. Yes. I'm saying where we are, not where we live.
Those numbers will not last long.
Yeah, yeah. Because I know with all this, uh, construction we got going on, this is what's.
Really.
The road construction.
Yeah.
Master court, uh, the county, all this road construction that we're doing, uh, other than all that, that adds to the GRT. Once it's all, it's all gone, no more construction necessary. We're going to see, uh, six hundred, six hundred thousand plus.
Ms. Estman also, can you explain the timeframe when you met with tax revenue? What are they, is there a specific timeframe that we're looking at? What was the comment that you made? Or do we have a specific deadline?
We have a deadline. We need to have everything done by March, by the end of March. So it can go into effect much in time if we decide, if you guys decide to do it.
Something to have on our discussion item.
Are you going to add this to the discussion item to the next meeting?
I can, yes.
I think that would.
I just have my mind to put it out there to let you, you guys know.
Just put it. I think we need to evaluate a lot of things because, uh, just imposing taxes because. Well, first of all. In the situation we're in, I realize that we are, we are looking forward to be proactive to add this to the, to the next year. However, there is a limit. I'm assuming you are talking about a point three percent that we are allowed to go up to without having a referendum vote. I'm assuming that's the point three. So we would exhaust that. We would, we are limited on how much we can add as a city without pulling out for voters. And then there's the final, which is eight or nine percent, whatever it is. That's the upper limit. You cannot go above that in the state of New Mexico. So that would be getting us to seven point four five percent. It would exhaust our discretionary bandwidth. And I think if we have that discussion, if you could have all of that and state where we are. I know we just, when the state reduced it by point one two five percent on the state size, that dropped our current to seven point one two five rather than the seven point two five. Uh, but anyway, a lot of background on that. And then, uh, Commissioner Teague was spot on in that whatever we're going to do with that. I think it should be dedicated because, uh, I just don't see. Without having dedicated markets for that, you know, it's going to be hard to just impose that. Anyway, so. Included in everything, what it can do for us, I mean, be what we're looking at or to do for us. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I know on, um, the thirtieth of January, which is a Monday, we'll have our finance workshop. We will have additional information that can help us decide this. So. That might be a good time to have the discussion. Over that. And that would be good. We would already be in that mode and have all of that.
Okay.
Do you know, I got a call on the way here, uh, that DOT should be issuing a check for eight hundred and some thousand dollars. So it's here. Should be applied towards the water.
Open our budget. So we can put it on the.
Yeah, pay down.
So you're saying this.
Yes. And then DOT did send us, they sent us, that would allow us to start making those payments. And we got our, and they're kind of checking.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, that eight hundred, what was it total amount?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred and seven thousand dollars will be applied to our, uh, the DOT that DOT has given us for the street. And we have another one. It's, uh, approximately four hundred and thirty-four thousand. And, and that once hopefully by the end of April, we will see that money and we can apply that to the project. This total right now, what do we look at? Two point.
One or one point two right now, but we're not.
Okay. So we're, we're getting close. We're getting close. Crystal, just squeeze down. Yeah. Down the pat and your belt just a little bit. Anything further? Please do.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, Mr. City Manager. Using funds from the state officer recruitment and retention funds, we hired two certified police officers last week who previously worked with us. We will be voting on the resolution accepting these funds here shortly. Operation cleanup is set to begin two new projects, one in District One on East Jefferson and the other in District Three on Avenue L. One of these properties abandoned and burned out. The other is occupied by squatters, but we finally tracked down the owner to Washington State. And she had no idea squatters rocked behind the rest of us. They'd been there for almost ten years. Twelve locations are threats to public safety and routinely attract criminal activity. The owners are cooperating with us. She hadn't known they were there for ten years, but she continues to pay the property tax on it. We had two incidents this weekend involving a suspect who we are currently conducting a manhunt for. In one incident, the suspect, who was out on felony parole, grabbed one of our police vehicles head on, towing it. That officer suffered from severe whiplash. The other incident involved the same suspect where he briefly dragged one of our female officers attempting to arrest him. She's okay. The suspect is still at large. The manhunt is being assisted by the Lee County Drug Task Force, Division of Parole Department and State Police. And lastly, although we have two police cadets entering the academy in two weeks, by May of this year, we will hopefully have four officers on every one of our four police shifts. We are currently at twenty-three officers. A year ago, we had thirteen. I would like to specifically thank City Manager Martinez. Last year, he promised me four officers per shift and he kept that promise. This has had a direct positive impact on public safety and our ability to serve the city. The manager for enabling us to rebuild our department. And I'll stand for your questions.
I have to ask, I'm sorry. If we had him right there, why is he still at the bar? I don't know. He crashes into this and he.
So in the first incident where he had on the, our officer, his airbags deployed and sending up a lot of dust and his door was crammed. So he had to kick it open. That allowed the time, uh, the suspect time to exit his vehicle. There was a foot pursuit and we lost him. It was at one o'clock in the morning, Sunday morning. The one where the, a female officer made contact with him, she was attempting to get him out of his vehicle and he just reversed and almost ran her over and she got knocked to the ground.
Sorry, but they were at the same time.
No, no, it was twelve hours.
I'm glad. You good? All righty.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. So first off, I want to start, I want to thank Commissioner White, Dr. Martinez and Jay Lane on their help with the recruitment process at the fire department. We had a total of twenty-eight applications that most of them came from the NDA. However, we only had five applicants show up for the testing, even though we had a bunch of them said they were going to be there. We only had five applicants show up to the testing and four of those applicants passed. So, uh, in the last three weeks, we have hired two new employees that are already working and on shift. One of which is a certified EMT. And we have started the hiring process on four others. So we're going to conduct another test on January twenty-first at AAM. We have two, three more applicants that said they were going to test to our fire and the MS certified. So if we can get two of these applicants employed, then we can go back to our three shifts instead of the two shifts that we're on right now. We can go back to our three shifts working forty-eight, ninety-six. And this will cut down our overtime approximately eighty percent. While we have these people that are interested, we're also asking the commission to allow us to hire three positions that have been frozen since early two thousand twenty. We're supposed to have seven personnel per shift. Right now, y'all are allowing us to hire for six. So if we can get these positions hired while we have the applicants who are interested, this would cut our overtime down to approximately ninety-five percent. We wouldn't have hardly any overtime. This would also improve our ability to serve the city of Livingston and Morley more adequately. We have four employees that are starting their basic class next week. And we also have one employee that's starting paramedic class next week. So your basic class is a semester, usually about six months. The paramedic class is about two years' time. We have had a meeting with Morley to discuss some sort of partnership with them to try to keep employees. At this time, we have nothing planned. We're going to have more meetings in the future, but we have started trying to talk to them. So our quarterly numbers. So I'll start with December's numbers. We had our total EMS calls were three hundred and ninety-nine EMS calls just in December. We had fifty-two interfacility transfers, seventeen airport transfers, a hundred and two refusal canceled employees, thirteen table calls and six fire calls. So for the last quarter, that puts us at seven hundred and ninety-four EMS calls, a hundred and sixty-eight interfacility transfers, forty-one airport calls, two hundred and forty-seven refusal canceled DOA, twenty-nine table calls and fifty-nine fire calls. So now I've got yearly. So yearly EMS, two thousand four hundred and eighty, or eight hundred and forty-one. Interfacility transfers, five hundred and fifty-five. Airport transfers, a hundred and sixty-three refusal canceled DOA. We had nine hundred and twenty-four. We had a hundred and six table calls and three hundred and nine fire calls. And this last quarter was done with the limited personnel that we had. This last quarter has been our busiest. So that's our numbers for the year. And I have nothing else. I will stand for your questions.
I have a couple on the. The refusal. Is that, do you count that when they actually make it to the location and then they are?
So a refusal is if they get to the scene and the person, whether it's car wrecked, somebody called for whatever. Like this one, we got a call for a man that was acting in his vehicle. They said he was flopped over. He was mad because he ran out of gas, but we got called for it. Is that what happened over there? Yes. So we get a lot of those. But that's what a refusal is. That's our, you know, we start, we go around and they cancel us.
So there's several things that add to that particular.
Yes.
Uh, my last question is, uh, now that we've had a few months based on the old system. And the, I hate to say, the collection, uh, agency that we kind of put on that. I think we dispersed a whole lot of, uh, immediate concerns from, you know, some of us were warranted. And then we straightened out a few things. Has that pretty much ceased to?
For the most part, we do get some calls sometimes of people who are like, you know, my insurance paid this. I've got it approved. And so at that point, we get a hold of the collection agency. I mean, we've still been working with people, but we're not getting near the calls as we were at first.
Well, I know that that is a, uh, an item that is on the. Examiners, on the examiner, auditors, that we have this outstanding account receivable. We can't just write it off. But hopefully by the time we get to that point, we'll be able to give them a number. This is what we collected. The rest of it, there may be some continually in collections, but we can give it. The rest of it is going to be classified as bad debt, it's non-collectible.
Do you have to write off twenty seventeen back?
Yes. Well, we just weren't able to pursue that. And we can't write it off. That was, we just have to say, this is not collectible. It's not collectible. We were allowed to go back. So we are approaching that and hopefully will at least get one of those items or get that item off that. If there's not, whatever that number is, six million dollars or something. We, we're not pursuing. We, we pursued it as far as we knew.
Yes, sir.
And if we didn't get a quarter of that, we'll be like. We didn't even get a, I'll put it nuts in. But if we do, we'll be like, if you do, we'll be like, yes, absolutely. Okay. I just haven't talked about it in a while. All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, chiefs, can you explain the timeframe for the new fire truck that we will eventually end the ambulance and squad?
So as of right now. I had, um. Mrs. Estman also is trying to get with Ed about the carryover, the money that we carried over from our last year's fire fund. And when they locate that, at that point, we have received the hundred and ninety thousand from the county. And we will make the PO to the truck and hopefully we will receive the truck in May.
Okay.
The ambulance has been ordered, the PO has been issued, but we're looking at at least eighteen more months before we receive anything.
But May of this year will be the fire truck and hopefully next year, two thousand twenty-four, the ambulance.
Probably closer to twenty-five.
For the ambulance. And the police cars, we have six waiting to get outfitted at AEP up in Albuquerque. The latest estimate is mid-February. For six months, which were paid for by county and县. And now we need another. We're down to having in one shift, having two officers have to ride in one unit or they have to hot seat a unit, which is basically turn it over from ship to ship. I'm back in the two thousand seven topic again. Two hundred thousand miles, but that's okay.
Sometimes it's a good thing.
It's a good thing, but some are. Thanks for letting me know.
Thank you, Frank. Appreciate it. Commissioner Bo.
I'd just like to thank everybody for being here. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Good holidays. Couple of things I'd like to. To see that, uh, deer grow, that that strike to the hospital. That means any problems or maybe it'll create some more problems, who knows? Make the, I'd like to really say thank you to whoever was involved with the railroad crossing. And I went over that the other day and that was a great improvement. And I was, so everybody involved, I'd like to thank you all. Everyone in that area. Also. Again, I'm going to say, please, this, we shop local. Please go to restaurants, eat out here. Do whatever you can. Keep the money in lock and thread. Every dollar spent here helps out the community. Helps out our businesses and helps out everybody. So I thank you very much for doing that. Open that, uh, that leads us into a good new year and future year. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Street. I want to use this with the public staff and board of commissioners to have a new year. Also want to thank everybody too. Still a good year. So look forward to this year.
Mr. White.
Happy New Year.
So, so I would like somewhere down the road to have a discussion about the Chaparral Park. For whatever reason, I decided to be on the lake. And I was really, uh, I didn't realize that we had a new UTV area where they ripped up all the wooden poles that have been there since we were kids. And there's huge sections of those missing. And you can see trails where people have decided that their UTV, that's actually illegal in my neighborhood. And I guess they drove it to the park and, you know, they make a disgrace of our grasslands and different things like that. So there's no telling what kind of truck, uh, trauma the ducks had for being chased by them either. But we probably really need to look at that somewhere and try to update that for some week or a week, a couple of nickels or something like that. That could cause some issues or different things like that. So I'd like to address that somewhere down the road. Other than that.
Yeah, I was informed, uh, from Mr. Gandy that, remember, fourth of July, people driving all the way up there, vehicles to pay here. So we need to do something. I have a program where they know vehicles are, are ATVs. Need to do something. I have a program where they know vehicles are, are ATVs.
I think, uh, our parks and rail community would be a good place to start and discuss, uh, possible to do that and recommendations.
Well, they're gonna need money, so it's really like.
Well, that's the hard part.
But I figured I'd just start here. That's all I have, sure.
Staley?
Uh, yes, sir. We will be closed Monday for Milwaukee Day, so, um, if we can get the agenda out, possibly this week, have it early, have it ready early by Tuesday morning. So we're gonna have to start thinking of what we want on the agenda today.
By Friday, yeah.
Tomorrow, tomorrow. And that's all I have.
Staley? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, um, we met with, um, Mr. Russell Doss the other day. And, um, our, our new consultant, his name is Arthur Torres, he will replace Leo Wilson. And he will start this Friday at, uh, Waste Park. And so I've time to meet with him. Uh, he's gonna do an assessment, he will meet with, with the boys, and then we will go from there. One thing that I'm gonna request of him is just a complete financial assessment, where we're at, where we need to go. Just excited that he's now on board. We'll continue to make progress at the wastewater and stations. Few weeks ago, we submitted RP or LED stating lights for our baseball softball fields. We did not get anyone submitted, no one submitted a bid. So we're working with Jay Lee, we're gonna, um, go through CES. We have a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace lights at baseball softball field. That two hundred and fifty thousand is from the Magics Foundation and also from the county. And so, um, our, our next step is we have to hire a, quote-unquote, lighting engineer. So that's where I'm at now. Hopefully we can bring somebody on board and have new lighting before the season starts. I know it's around the corner, we're now January, before we know it, it's going to be April and baseballs. So, um, I will work on the, on the CES, CES contract and get the ball rolling on this project. That's all I have. I'll stand for any questions that the commissioner have.
On your first topic, I actually was at the wastewater treatment facility this afternoon. And basin one, we, for everyone's information, we just retrofitted with all new air, irrigation equipment. Had a slight mishap after we first fired it up, but it is operational. We watched it go through a, a irrigation cycle, tremendous difference between ba- basin one and basin two. And so, uh, hopefully, uh, we, now that we've got that one, we've got some other slight problems that we've got to take care of before we can do basin two. But I do believe our treatment's gonna be a lot better, and so we're definitely moving in the right direction. You can, you can see that fortunately basin one comes on and then less than five minutes later basin two comes on, so you can see the difference immediately. So we are definitely in the right direction. Want to commend all the efforts. It's been a complete effort on wastewater treatment plus the city administration. All right, Ms. Ball.
Dan, Mr. President, Happy New Year. Um, the magistrate was having trainings today on their electrical and, um, or in-house stuff, uh, for just different things. Uh, it is not open yet. Uh, they're still having, they had some delays due to the internet and the actual key, code keys to get in and out of the building. They had some, there was a back order on that and stuff didn't come in on time. So they're a little behind, but they're still moving around along.
Is that all?
Yeah, and everything else, all the other meetings, we're, of course, canceled through all the holidays, so don't have a lot of updates on any of those yet, but we'll be getting back in all that.
Uh, Mayor Commissioner, just, uh, one, I am particularly with Crystal, um, on our solar project as well, Theo, they asked about, you know, memorandum, uh, to update. I've got a version of that memorandum. Usually they're short and sweet. They just say, you know, there's a contractual agreement between the parties, here's the footprint of that contractual agreement to put the rest of the public on notice of where it's located, and then if you've got questions, who can contact, uh. So we'll change out the one that will send us, will not have as much detail in there. One of the reasons is that, uh, and it's public record, so somebody could request a copy of it, but the more detail you put in that memory, the more opportunity there is to conflict with what's in the contract. So, yeah, should have short, sweet version of it. I think it's coming up on the next agenda, so. If you have any questions about that or any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you.
They had presented me with, I guess, the contract and, uh, former Mayor Commissioner Hill had signed it and they asked if he needed an updated signature. If it's exactly the same, you know, well, it was. So that was actually how it ended up with you.
Right.
Uh, because they were in, in a hurry and I'm like, uh, well, no, a hurry is usually not a good time. Well, and yeah, I'd say it had been word for word and the only thing that's changed was the signature. I had a problem regarding that taking that and move forward, but. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'm Crystal. I know the, the public's kind of getting on edge of not getting that commercial street open. Can you get us a target date again, so maybe?
I will get this.
Yeah, because I know they gave us a date, but I don't think that a date, yeah, so. Maybe, you know, we can share that information to the public that they, uh, they're. I know we at least have to have one main area, either it'll be commercial or public, so, uh, and most likely it's commercial, so.
Yeah, it will be in the intersection, that'll be.
Yeah, it needs to be, even if it's just, it needs to cross over, you know, just where we get that traffic, heavy traffic starting to move down commercials instead of, down state streets, that's gonna affect us.
Yeah, I have a meeting with the Wednesday, so.
Thank you, thank you. All right, I have nothing present than what I've said, so moving on, uh, this will bring us to our public comment section. I welcome anyone to come forward if you'd like to make a comment. And we just ask that you, uh, first of all, approach the podium, state your name, and then proceed, try to beat the three minutes or so and accommodate everyone, so. No one's popping up, oh, okay.
Hello, everyone. I am Jennifer Lopez. I'm the Vice President for the ambassadors. I'm the Director of the Chamber. Um, we are starting coffee with cops set up and, um, we have, we have like three people to get back with me. We'll get that final list tomorrow for the year. And so we're gonna do all Chamber members, um, different ones, and we're gonna do Chamber breakfast as well. We have that all set up. So we'll have that final list tomorrow. We'll get it on Wednesday. So everybody, we'll all here. We explain a little bit, we'll call it coffee with cops. We'll just go, um, each Chamber member will host. Um, the cops, the LPD will, um, provide the donor, and then whoever's hosting it will. One of our two, um, places that will be Chamber members by the, the annual, and then, um, whoever's hosting it will just provide the coffee and we'll go legal and and we invite everyone. It'll be every month, the third Thursday, correct? Yes. Okay, every month. And it's a, it's a long one. We wouldn't call, um, we've done it at LCCA and stuff and we have really good turnout. It's a long time.
Just for the public to ask us questions, I think.
So Chief is gonna be fun. We'll see how fresh one of those speeches continue. The second one, she's gonna say, no, no more. We just wanted to come up here, we're just, um, this is gonna be something the ambassadors are gonna be starting off, just a networking, so, um, the city, our citizens can now, um, chief, LPD is, or LPD as well, and our, our Chamber members. And then, uh, we've been working on the gallons, so everyone will be getting either banquet, our banquet, our annual banquet, uh, rich lines are more than welcome to come. I think the city, uh, we employ the city, Jay Lee, we're good tables, but you're more than welcome to. And we're using sponsors, so whoever wants to sponsor, just, um, get in touch with us and we'll let you know what all is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I'm not quite sure if this is where I need to address this, but I'm willing to bring it full.
Sounds good.
I travel these streets every single night.
Before you go too far, I'm sorry, your name and please.
My name's Leah Morgan.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And I live here in the community. And I travel these streets every single night, anywhere from about nine thirty, ten o'clock at night to about five, five thirty in the morning. Because I am throwing the papers for the sun. And one of the things that I noticed, and I did do a little bit of background check, and found that there is an ordinance here in the city that states you're not supposed to be in tractor trailers on city streets or parked in their yards. You, and then now you've got campers that are doing the same thing too, but they're everywhere and they are a hazard. To try to look around corners. That somebody comes flying through and I've almost been hit, probably in the last five years, probably a hundred times, because you can't see them. And my question is, is why is this ordinance that was passed, I believe the date was like March of twenty fourteen? Why is it not being, why is it not being enforced? Why are these people still allow, to allow their vehicles to sit there? Drop oil, drop diesel all in the ground, which goes down into our water supplies too, and block all these. And it makes the community look trashy. It truly does. I don't, I don't understand that, so. Somebody could give me an answer to that, I would really appreciate it.
We had a B, my memory building, within the last two meetings, though, in which we discussed that and we are, enforcement and our, uh, police department are now working on that particular subject. Because, uh, there's, anyway, we're working, we had a lot of, a fairly lengthy discussion on that. Sorry you missed it, but it is, it, it's something that I would, I, it's one of my pet peeves also. And I would like to see, and we're trying to come up with some solutions, um, for that. And also still help our citizens have the ability to work new build and, uh, and live in mud.
All right, and I get that, because they, and I understand that, because at one time, I had a CD, I was an MTR, that was an O R. So I understand that, but I'm just wanting to know, you know, who are we gonna do it, or someplace that these guys can find? That somebody said companies would let them have an area off their trucks.
If I may just add one thing, um, it's important to realize that it's only a legal residential district.
Right.
So if you take, you do have homes that are commercial districts.
Right.
In other words, the entire section of First Street, which is all residences almost, is actually a commercial district. So if someone parks their truck and the driver there on the street, there's nothing we can do.
Okay.
Well, we do have one home enforcement officer and she's been working diligently, um, targeting these tracks.
Right, so First Street, all the way from one end together, is always considered commercial.
Right, Crystal's like, so, just because you see a residence doesn't mean it's in a residential area.
Well, that's why I was asking, because it's not just there, because there is, there's one there, and I'm sure you know which one I'm talking about, right here on the corner.
Yeah.
It's either J or K.
On First.
Literally, you, you can't see either way.
Well, they can't park so close to the intersection, but they can park their legal.
Yeah.
And, uh, Crystal has the zoning map and can tell you which areas are commercial and which are residential.
But I'm talking about the ones that are in the city limits, that are in the subdivisions, anywhere from literally Avenue R. Because I have the entire square from R all the way down Main, all the way back up D, all the way up to the airport. So everything in between there, I have, is my route. So I can see that.
So that's a commercial problem.
Okay.
Or a district.
All right.
And they have legal rights parked there. They don't have legal rights to dump diesel fuel or oil.
Yeah, you should have got a lot of leagues going on, too.
We are working with them.
Okay. So I just, I just, I just. I appreciate your time.
On our scope.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on. All right, brings us to our non-action items. Uh, first item is, uh, we're gonna discuss the wastewater contract. Waste management, you're welcome to come up and have your. They're just gonna turn the floor over to you, sir.
We'll be the new mayor of commissions, uh, under a known, the public sector managers, so, contracts throughout the state, that's who, West Texas, South Colorado, South East Shootoffs, and I'm figuring, with me tonight is Dustin Picknell. These are district managers and he's in charge of all operations, sorts of things that, out of our hots and depth, all inside, so. That's who, that's who we are, but, uh, thank you. I, uh, appreciate you allowing me the time to actually make this presentation. But we're bringing, uh, four separate items before the commission this evening. First of all, we want to, we want to let the commission be aware of the, of the annual rate increase using the consumer pricing mix that's specified by our agreement. The second item is a minor amendment to the agreement. The cost of an item that was allowed by the agreement is actually valued through a big sheet, so. He asked the commission to allow to make that, and take that action. The third item asks for commission consideration and approval, additional rate adjustment to cover the actual very high fuel. And finally, we'd like to let the commission know that we're going to be paying to have a, an agreeable third party conduct a quality service study probably in the second quarter. So back on item one, the annual rate increase is based on the water sewer and trash index, CTI index is published by the Bureau of Statistics. That index came in at three point nine percent. And so that took the rate from nineteen dollars and fifteen cents per home to nineteen dollars and ninety cents. It's about a seventy-five percent a month increase per boat, uh, per first container. And the agreement specifically indicates that that's an automatic increase, it's something that happens and at the end, we're, we did contract, but we wanted to, I mean, make the mission aware of that, uh, that increase also give the commission opportunity to, you know, make any comments, should you have any. Uh, the second item for mission consideration is, is just a minor amendment to the agreement where an overage fee that's allowed by the language in the agreement could be included on the rich sheet. So, and, uh, I know you guys have, uh, I'm presuming you've got the, uh, the contract and the letter that I sent to. Uh, in section three G one of the agreement, the agreement specified that waste management in charge of a resident's overage fee, uh, but this is not, uh, particularly, how would this be used, I think is something that, you know, would be of interest to the commission. And that is, we don't look at, at a, an overage fee as being, we don't look at it any kind of revenue stream, the reality is, uh, revenue stream. Well, we look at it as an incentive to get people who are chronically overloading their containers to buy that or to, you know, to keep that additional container. And, and so how this would work is we would have. our driver, we come up, they would see an overloaded container, leave a tag on that container that you know, simply say, this is how you get another container, this is the problem, we're trying to clean them. You know, Lannington, and with the efforts of you guys' direction, the efforts of staff has been doing, it's pretty incredible. And I just think being able to regulate the overages on the trash is, is just, yeah. Real nicely, which is part of what you guys are part of. And so basically, a driver would leave a tag, they would get two warnings before A P S would be, would be issued. So then we get two tags, actually three tags. But at the same time, we have cameras on our truck. We call it a smart truck system, which basically the truck comes up, they can see the container, they can associate a particular address. That, that photograph, and the driver has nothing to do with it, that photograph's not on that. And that's sent to an audit team, the audit team will look at it and say, yeah, that's an obvious, you know, overage. Not, you know, lift, lift or something, but it's an obvious, you know, eyesore, it's obvious, something that catchers can get in, birds and dogs and men. And so, and they would automatically generate a letter that would go to, it's a letter or an email. Then we go to the owner of that particular town articulate the same information that the driver and so we want to communicate directly with the folks that try to clean up the community. We're trying to help you guys, you know, the city do that. And, and, yeah, so anyways, that's basically how that, how that works, so.
One question. Do you, at that point, in the past, I had received your pictures on some business sites, but do you do you go ahead and dump that container at that point?
Yes, we do. Actually, the, the agreement of, of Mrs. Mayor, which, the agreement actually says that we don't have to collect the, you know, the overage.
Right.
But I can't imagine not, I mean, that's what we do, right? We're trying to collect the trash, what are we going to do to let it sit there? So that part of the agreement, and I did write that, by the way, but I'm not quite sure why when we were negotiating this, but no, we're, we will take the campaign. Trash is the only way until we take it somewhere, well aware of that.
Well, that, that, I think that is a problem because just human nature, if you go ahead and take it until there is a penalty, so you pretty much throw out the first one. You might throw in the second one, your notice and all of that. And then when you finally get to the nuts and bolts, that it's either going to cost them or whatever, then you're going to get attention. So the reason I was asking that is, I appreciate your efforts in trying to inform them, and just don't know that it's going to work until they, they go.
Yeah, well, we can resume one.
Go ahead, finish your statement.
We just want to give everybody, you know, an opportunity to know what's going on, to understand what's going on, to understand the regulations, so.
That's what we, you know. So my question is on, we'll just take like the last couple of weeks, you know, there's, there's weather conditions and different things that, that play into effect. And, you know, sometimes your guys are shorthanded and different things like that. How do you distinguish the difference between you're a day late or two days late and people still got to dump their trash into something? Our, our reason for having in that situation, because, you know, first of the, you know, well, just use me for instance, and, and I overloaded my truck, then he looked at me, he thought, no, I don't think so, he did it again. But the third time, it's actually on you guys. So how do you distinguish that, that point of, you know, that there?
If there are push routes, there, there are. Okay, so there would be no enforcement action at all, we'd count them one way or the other. And, and the other, the other thing, too, is Thanksgiving and Christmas, those are two more, you know, holidays. Those would be
Okay, well, I was just curious, because I know that somehow during the holidays, our, our business one kind of got overloaded, because we were still working and for whatever reason, you know, we got missed a couple of times and it's like, oh, this is
Yeah, and if there, if there are any misses, Mayor and Mission, if there's any misses, anything resulting from that would not be in. I was just, just about that. I, I did, I did want to put up one other thing if I could. And that is, in the contract, we negotiated some language that specified that three instances of overages in a, in a rolling twelve month period would allow us to actually take a can over and put it on there. So now basically, it would happen. So on those situations that don't happen within, you know, a rolling twelve month period, well, that's when the overage might, might kick in. But anyway, that's, and, and so how we would get that in the agreement, there's one of two ways. My recommendation is that we would put it on the new rate sheet. Because at the anniversary date, if it's on that, it becomes a part of the contract. And so that would be a reasonable way, I, I would think that we could handle that. If you want to do it via a formal limit, we'd be going to have to do that as well. I would just ask for some direction perhaps. So the third item, four considerations, I want this a little bit more contentious. It's a discussion of approval of an additional rate adjustment for fuel. As we're all where everybody's lives have been adversely impacted by a forty year high inflation rate. Some would say it's driven by the national response to COVID nineteen, and some would say there's change in federal fiscal and energy policy. A lot changed, labor market disruptions, where there's myriad reasons for it. But for waste management, the frontline labor costs and the fuels were, are really the, the two things that have been dealt since twenty twenty with the cost of fuel increasing nearly forty percent just the last year. And when we refer you in your packets, there is a fifty two week look back. This comes from the on-highly decent prices from the Rocky Mountain. It's published by the Office of Energy Statistics. And it shows that in November fifth, April twenty twenty one, this was three eighty four. And November seventh, twenty twenty two, it was five thirty four, that's a thirty nine point oh six percent increase. And those are the kinds of things that really you know, that we feel, we feel big. The impacts of inflation on the provider services are measured by a different index other than C P I, it's called P P I, it's producer price index. And basically, we would use the sector that is for general freight tracking and local, local hauls. And that tracks inflation to the providers of services before they reach to consume. So really, it's an earlier predictor of inflation, but it also tracks the actual cost of providing that, that service. And in July, the national P P I came out at fifteen point seven nine. In November, it was seventeen point four five. So basically, what those figures indicate is that's the cost this guy has to provide to consumers, or increase your And so that's what he's looking at. But the additional rate adjustments caused for agreement, I think it refers very clearly that that the city has an understanding that extraordinary circumstances beyond our ability to control do actually happen. And so we respectfully request the commission to, to discuss and allow us to recapture at least a portion of the fuel through an adjustment to the rates. So here's a kind of breakdown of these rate increases. So the current rate's nineteen dollars and fifteen cents. With the three point nine percent C P I, the automatic C P I adjustment, it would go to nineteen dollars and ninety cents, which is a seventy five cent per home, per first contained increase. And we are asking for a seven point one five percent fuel adjustment, which is, equates to a dollar thirty seven. So the rates would go up on the only thirty seven cents. The overall rate we, we would be requesting would be twenty one dollars and twenty seven cents. And then the, the last item, just real quick, and then I guess we'll talk about all of this stuff, but the last item is really for information only, and I, I mentioned it in my introduction, but I wanted to reiterate it here because I think it's important that we know how we're doing as well as you guys know how we're doing. So, so we will agree our work with Dr. Martinez to, to choose to select a third party to conduct a quality service study. And we'll work together to see if we think about the questions that we would like to ask, that we would all like to ask, that we'd like the interest to. And then we'll be doing that in the second quarter of this year, so we're actually going to start the work. Yeah, and that completes my presentation. I'm going to stand for questions and also be asking the commission to take action on item number two, which is adding the, the overage fee to the rate sheet. And item number three, that's the extraordinary fuel.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. Go back to your math earlier. You said, so the customers will see seventy five cent rate increase plus a dollar thirty seven, so it was two dollars and twelve probably two dollars, but you said twenty one, where did twenty one?
Oh, twenty one dollars would be what the rate went to from the total.
Nineteen fifteen to twenty to twenty one.
Thank you. So it, and so we're just looking at two dollars and twelve cents rate increase.
Rating.
Yeah, yeah, I just said when I heard that, twenty one dollars.
Yeah. Is that per container? That's for first container. Most people have first containers, and they get the second container. You know, they get to discount, what kind of discount we have now.
So you might get to that. What's the, the review?
Yeah, no, first container, additional part is seven dollars a
There were the times like that. I know this is in the thousands.
Is this rate increase, fuel increase county wide, are you, are we looking at jail, units, Hobs, is this?
Look.
Is it just Lannington, or is it the entire county? And what has been the response from the other municipalities?
Yeah, no, no good point. So this is just for Lannington, this, this request is just for Lannington, but we're also making those requests for Hobs and for jail.
So it's county wide, all municipalities?
Yeah, well, the, the request will, will be there, but we do it, we hold off, we try to do it at the anniversary date of the contract.
Okay.
So it just depends on when their contracts renew. So is that seven dollars and eighty cents a container right now before the increase? How much will that go up? That would be, that would be the road fuel, it's eight dollars.
And that was for second container?
Yes, yes.
I'm not a big opponent of fuel surge, don't, no, but don't take that. It's because, and, and my question is leading up to, they I drive a diesel truck, so I'm pretty accustomed to fuel trucks, part of the diesel. As you know, yes, we got up five fifty, there was a point, I, and you didn't even reflect it that high. But we did, you're in Lannington. And now, you know, we've dropped down, we've actually had some under threes, or whatever. Okay, we enact this this year. What do we do next year? Because, I mean, if it's dropped back down to three something, are you going to present, hey, we're going to drop this back down? I mean, the problem with fuel surcharges, and we've all seen this over the past few years, is once they're there, they would never go away. Regardless, and we've all seen, I mean, I paid six dollars for diesel in, been a while, two thousand and six or whenever it was. Oh, okay. And fuels charge, you know, that was when fuel surcharge hit every bill that you were getting. They're still there. So, you know, and we went down, I paid as little as say, I think I paid some dollar ninety nine diesel there for a while, within that country, so, you know. What, what is your, what has been your experience in, and you asked this, and we were to agree to it, or whatever, what happens the next year? And do you really reflect and go back and say, okay, we appreciate your help last year, it's come down to we? In your experience?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great question, and it's a question that comes up many times when we ask for regulations. Yeah, the reason that we're asking for this is because of returning some of the inflationary costs that we're on a daily basis. If that comes down, absolutely, we could come back in. And every community from the west, the house, that we have, you know, asked these types of things too, we, we have also made this part of motion that we can come back in. Because it's not, and I agree with the part you're saying about, you know, fuel. Some of our open market customers at the end of the day, there's never come. But that's the great thing about the work in, in the local government arena that I work, is we, we can nothing is cut to stone, it's what you guys want, it's what we negotiate back and forth. Hopefully, and that was a good product that, you know, that looks for the unit. So, so, yeah, I will commit that we will come back in if the price is coming back down.
Commissioner. So I don't, to me, it seems kind of silly, but it's not. So where do you purchase your fuel? I figured you're like me, buy bulk fuel, and you have a station probably at yours, or do your guys buy wherever they're, yeah, so you were buying fuel in Lannington, or buying fuel in Hobs, or or jail, or wherever that's where they're nearest to whenever they remember to fill up the truck? How that works, or how does that?
Yes, we fuel outside, we don't have any, any thanks time, so we're at the mercy of the price of these sports. So we, various truck stops, the, well, our drivers have fueling in cars, so every day, that's what we're paying.
Okay, so would you say your guys are typically used, because most, I'm making an assumption here, so I apologize. Most of your trucks come from Hobs, I think all your trucks are probably from Hobs. And then do they mostly fill up in Hobs, or do they fill up in Lannington? The reason I ask that is because we get just a couple of kicks, cents kickoff for that, you know, so that seems like we're being a team player somewhere. As far as, you know, you're, we're paying an increase, but you're actually supporting the community in purchasing fuel and different things like that. I know that there's certain services that are needed, that you wouldn't, we don't have to assist you in your operations, but, you know, fuel does kick back for the roads and taxes and different things like that. So that kind of makes sense to me, so.
Yes, sir, and it's, you know, the situation based, you know, all our trucks, time permitting, depending on how it is that they all end their route at the, at the landfill down there in Unis, so majority of them will utilize that, that, that truck stop right there on that way. If for some reason or another, they, they don't make that common trip to the landfill, they will utilize the, whatever local station that fuel man cars are except for that, I, I'm doing, so we keep it close to that, there's just some reasons. I know I've had to go up here multiple times to sister drivers and fuelers, yeah, stations here now.
Right.
So it's, it's mostly situational based, but.
So basically, you're basically, your car
There's a highly likely possibility that our main stations don't honor that hard bit. I know for a fact that at least a couple of them do, but it is limited to where we can use the cars that we do have.
Right.
That I do have, so I know for a fact that there's a couple here in town.
Oh, the gas cars, maybe on the regular.
Southside of town.
I know y'all are due because you get, you get to deliver this, and I mean, it's very easy. The highlight of your year is you get to go tell people. My last question, I hope, is as you said, it's contentious for the fuel surcharge. Okay? If we were to pass, just, I'm going to say probably the over, the over, or the I'm sorry. No, no, I'm, we'll do, the CPI is pretty much a given, the
Overage.
Overage on the other is. It is a target specific point. So I think that's pretty much, you know, if you have a user, it's not going to affect everybody, it only affects people. So, you know, that's pretty simple. If we come to this, is this a topic that if for the next year signing up for, could we revisit it? If, and I totally say only, there is a drastic reduction in fuel. I know, you know, that would be the same as if we opened that, then let's just say next year, all of a sudden diesel, or even in the middle of this year, diesel jumps to eight dollars a gallon. You would say, can, if, if we're able to revisit it in the middle of the year, can you revisit it in the middle of the year? I don't know. So that's the reason I'm asking this question. Is this a part of the contract that we could, we could negotiate not just once each?
I don't think there's anything in the contract that would preclude either party from coming back in the middle of the year. But I can, I can tell you that's typically not, I've, I've never done it. Because you have an anniversary day, an anniversary day. So how this, how this works, let's say you have a service that cost you in the beginning of the year, it costs you a thousand dollars, it goes up ten percent during the year. We're paying that ten percent, right? We're absorbing that cost at ten percent as it goes up. And then at the anniversary day, then we have the opportunity to kind of readjust them. We've absorbed all those costs, now it's, now it's up and we adjust our rates so that we're in a more level footing. And so that's typically why we don't visit anything unless it's at the anniversary date of the contract.
You're saying in your experience, basically, your company does not come back in at for renegotiation?
I've, I've been with the company seven, you know, retired law enforcement, so this is kind of separate. But I've been with the company for seven years. I have been to ask for anything except for a D anniversary date of the contract. I think that's when people expect that if there's something that needs to be adjusted in the contract, that that's when we're going to.
And I think overall, and I think overall, as a, as a governing body as well as our administration, I think we just need to keep the track for ourselves. So when we see a fuel cost increase, and then two years later, we see another one and another one, after a while, that doesn't add up and we're going to come back and say something. I think sometimes just because you've got order commissions change, or you've got changing government body every two years, you've got administration change, nobody keeps a track on it. That part about the, it's that our customers that suffer because now we're, we're at that twenty dollars. And now we're saying, well, how many times have we had a fuel cost increase in the last ten years that we, that you guys serviced us? And we have not, like the mayor said, reversed the cost because at some point, like during COVID, gas prices were well lower than two dollar digits, you know, two dollar something digits. But we continue to, to have that rate, that same rate, and the cost never went down. So, but nothing, I'm not picking on you guys or nothing like that, but I'm just saying, I'm just speaking out loud for the governing bodies as well as administration, that we need to keep a better track of it. That way the mayor can present that to you, you present certainties to us.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Trufel, I think the difference is, if you have a fuel surcharge, typically that's going to be in the contract as a specific coordinate or whatever interval we're going to look at, the fuel that may go up or may go down. What we're talking about here is we're talking about inflationary costs that are going to be extraordinary costs. It's something that we would normally, you know, I would normally be here asking you for fuel increase if it wasn't in extreme extraordinary circumstances. So to revisit that, if the fuel prices go down, is not, is a no brainer. And we do, we, we would be able to do that, be part of the.
I just think that that's going to be a big discussion out of, or our budgeting is on, on that. Because we've looked already at increase already, we're looking at it. Aren't we running the data and that currently right now, that area?
No, we're just, we're having ten, twenty dollars a year.
So we're just, yeah, so we need to make a creep as it is to offset these losses we made, of course, I'm just saying. Yeah, I'll listen, I understand, but like for the city of Lovington, I want to ensure that we have, when we go during our budgeting, we have pushing, not pushing, that we're not going every year asking for ratings. We'd rather just get the big hit out of the way and then that lasts three or four years and then tell them, you know, citizens that we have, well, you know, the other type, I just don't want nickel and dime, because I guarantee I don't want nickel and dime. Everybody every year, none of us will be up to that.
You're not spewing that, that part right there. Oh. No, I, it's two different issues.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, if I can kind of add to a little bit of flavor in terms of when this needs to be done. So the CPI is the, you see February first. But you actually have ninety days to decide on any extraordinary, you know, types of things that we've done yet. It, it, it doesn't have to coincide with the anniversary date of the contract. So.
Thank you. You answered the question. I was fixing to move into, I had to get the date. And the, the contract date starts thirteenth day of January twenty twenty. So assuming our anniversary date is January thirteenth.
Actually, it's, yeah, it's February first, if it's spelled out in the contract.
And it, and it's not an action item on us tonight, so it's not like we're going to be voting on it tonight, but this is the time that we have to discuss this. I would, my, uh, earlier in the meeting, we were having a financial workshop on January the thirtieth. This is something I think that we, we as a city need to be added to that particular discussion and how we're going to affect that towards the citizens and everything else. And so I appreciate that you, you did mention that we have a little bit of time so that we can enact the best way. And as partners in our community, you know, we rely on you, you rely on us. And so everybody understands everything that's going on. It's just hard when you just keep hitting it, not you, when everything keeps hitting everyone and, you know, your economy is not just booming, then it, you gotta be able to have good reasons to move forward. And when you, when you're talking part of citizens in your community and they, they put you there to do that, then you better have good reasons as to why you thought this was okay to work. So with your indulgence, this is a topic that we have, we are definitely going to discuss. And, and, and you are more than welcome, you gentlemen are both, it'll be an open meeting, you're welcome to come in. If you had any questions and you wanted to be, it's all day, I couldn't give you a time at this point, but anyway, it is.
I understand. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, so the only thing that I would, you know, request that you, as decided, would be on the the owners to the rate sheet. That would be something that, that I would request.
Yeah. We will have, we will have that as an action item on our next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight, and we should be able to, to do that.
Sounds very good. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions for the board?
No, but Dr. Martinez, I just, yeah, just like Chris said, it's only ten thousand, it's two dollars, we get ten thousand away. So we're going to be most likely in the negative by the end of this fiscal year, absorbing this cost increase is what, is what I'm expecting. So something we have to really look deep into and then plus plan for the future on what we do to rate increases going to happen, plus plan for the future.
Thank you, John.
Very, very much.
All right.
Andy, careful.
All right, this is great. This is our next, next night. Now, this is a public hearing. You are providing with, with, with Mary. Jen, I believe you have some input.
Public hearing for the hearing by application for loss of areas we have here. So we have, it's representing of areas. And everything, everything has been advertised, you know, projections. This was something that, yeah, Alirea, Alisto, and before, so now they're requesting, now I'm hearing my audience. Any questions? Anyone have any questions about it?
Commissioner, have you been to the point? Yeah, I know, there's eight mile. Yeah, I read that last time, but it's not eight miles. Oh. That probably needs to be.
This is the application that was presented to alcohol. A C.
From?
It was presented from Los Mary Options to that alcohol, A C. And, yeah, that, that is, that's not right.
Yeah, both of those, both of those distances are not right. I think that, I'm pretty sure that the, that alcohol and gaming will, will accept a submission of a amendment from them on their application to, yes, but outside the three hundred, sorry, excuse me, the six hundred feet which is required by the city. But they're not six and they're not eight mile and that, I just think that that'd be a good thing to do, is probably do that. I'm recommending you do the amendment on that. It, it shouldn't be a big deal. As far as the
Well, church road behind the, so they'll know the store.
Yeah, that's as close as one.
Oh, the Lutheran, yes. Well, I was saying the other one would be.
There is one on B seven.
B, yes, B and seven. But it's.
That's Trinity, so.
Yeah, it's about the same distance. I mean, you're well within it. I'm not worried about that. First of all, it's passed previously, it's not going to be a big thing. So, but. This is a point for, for anyone who's present, we will open up comments. Please understand that the city really has no jurisdiction on this. This is our, this is a state agency. We go through this, it gives the public an opportunity to say they support or they don't support. That will be sent up with our recommendation. However, even our recommendation, even if we, as the five of us that appear and said, no, we don't want it, they still have the, the ability to continue on. It, it's kind of a preliminary act that they require of us. But if you have some, if you would like to make a statement for or against, then we will also include that. It may or may not have any effect, but this is your opportunity as, and then if you have questions for him, I'm sure Isabel would be more than happy to do the translation.
I think the answer should translate.
No. I can translate any person you wish.
Anyone, any commissioners? Anybody have any, anything to say? This is a non-action item. Do we make this an action item? Oh, is it, I'm sorry, I missed it. Okay, never mind. Yeah, okay. Other than that, no one had anything? I figured I missed anything?
No, I think historically what we've done is had an opportunity for the applicant to come talk to the commission and talk about some of the things I think the points that are raised, discrepancies in distances are not ones that would alter what's legal and not legal, right? They're all still within the acceptable boundaries. So, and then also gives the public an opportunity to talk about it in an hearing as opposed to when you get to the action item. So I think we followed historically what we've done in the past. So this applicant has had the same opportunity at it as every other applicant we've had. I think one of the other points is that the business at that particular location already has a permit and so, you know, it kind of gives us some perspective.
Isabel, he's welcome to say anything he wants to say or he doesn't have?
He's very thankful for the opportunity. If it does pass, this is going to help a lot his business. Especially to contract more employees. And he's going to make sure that everything is good on, I would say, making sure people are not intoxicated to leaving and make sure everything is by the guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to our community. I haven't met you. I know you've been open a few months, but anyway, we'll try to, we wish you all any success in your endeavor.
Thank you so much.
Action items. Board up. For resolution twenty twenty-three, that is zero zero one, approval to amend TPF grant number LP two zero zero two eight. I have a motion in second. Appreciate this resolution. Crystal, is this you?
Yeah.
Okay, let's catch it.
Um, so what I'm needing to do is make an amendment to my TPF grant that we got for the Mill and Overlay projects because the county has decided to do Avenue K for us, and that was one of the streets we were doing. So in order for me to switch to go ahead and use that same amount of money, I had to pick another street that was about the same length and everything. So we actually did come up with doing Thirteenth Street from Polk to Jackson. There, actually from Gore to Jackson, it is in really bad shape. From Polk to Jackson, from Polk to Gore, it's not real bad, but it, it needs attention before it does get real bad. And then we also added Avenue I from Main to First Street, and it is actually where people go in by the laundromat there on Main to go in and pick up the kids from the kindergarten. And it's just a little, but that road is, it is really bad right there. So we're going to fix those areas instead. And by the chance to approve this resolution so I can send it to the state and get their okay that we change out those streets.
We're going to do that in the summertime. An avenue I.
That will probably be done. I would try to schedule that like during spring break or after school. Yes, that will be in later because I do not want, because yeah, the the pickup lines there in front Avenue I and First Street road in there are pretty bad. So you don't want to mess with that. Do you have any other questions about it? It's just a simple amendment that I got to send to the state.
If not, Shannon.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think motion for resolution 2023 dash 002. Accepting the the use of funds from the Mexican Department of Finance Administration for the officer recruitment and retention fund. Yeah, I want you to second on this.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, this would be an acceptance of the funds offered through the state's officer retention improvement fund. It's $281,000 over three years. The way it broke in office within five days of signing this resolution, we would receive 112,500. I've already earmarked that for 75,000 to pay for two officers and 37,000 for retention laws for existing officers. You'd say 75,000 will cover two officers. That's true, but this goes on a fiscal year cycle. So we've received another 112,500 from this fund in July of this year. And whatever we don't use, we would have to return to the state, but that's not going to be a problem because it will be used.
Any, I'm sorry, is that all? Any discussion? Okay, if not, Jen.
Mr. Y, yes. Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Mr. Danny.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think motion for resolution 2023 dash 003. Approval of the over me that.
We have a motion in second on that. Ken, you're it.
Can search us our annual approval of the exact all by and then say required us.
Which I said we have to.
Yeah, we do have to if there's a section in there that we do have to.
It seems to dictate if we have to and then say, go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the commission? And she said we have to, so Jen.
Mr. Trivio.
Yes.
Mr. Y, yes. Mr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes. Yes, we love them. Okay.
I'd like to make motion for resolution 2020, 2023 dash 004 approval to support Chamber of Commerce.
You did say that? Did you say second? Okay, that's what I was waiting on. There was motion in a second for approval of that spot. Ms. Kimbrough.
You know, this is something I've been working on for several years and I'm really just going to apply that it's a good point. I've been, and I've both have been working together and trying to get this through for years. I just think it's going to be a great thing for the community. One thing I do know is that a couple of people have addressed some commissioners about that about take away jobs from city employees. And I don't think that that's going to happen. I think it's just going to make it easier for the parks and rags guys to be able to do what they're doing and not. I just think it's a great thing. So something we've been excited about for a long time.
Questions? I agree, I do not believe it's not. I think they have plenty to do. So we'll find something. All right. No further discussion, Jen.
Mr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Trivio.
Yes.
Mr. Y. Yes. Mary Roberts.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to make motion for resolution 2023 dash 005 approval of CES contract with Pedigree Associates for capital outlay grant SAP 22 dash G4062 SSTV, STVR, Loveington Wells and Water Systems.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, this is our, I'm sorry, sorry. Okay. Motion in second. Okay, yes, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, this is our 352,370 dollar capital outlay grant through environmental department. So we've been working with environmental departments on the proposal. Civil engineering services, project scope and system assessment. I think you have this attachment with the packet. Civil design services. The third one is is critical. It's the bidding and construction administration. So what they will do is they'll actually, on behalf of the city R and P, and they'll go through that entire process. So we're looking at total amount for pedigree is a 60, 61,443 dollars and seven cents. That would be the charge. And then whatever's left of the 352,000, that would go to whoever would get the contract to work on. All system.
They'll be working with the COG, right?
Correct. There's still going to be our. Correct, so yes.
It is going.
Yes.
All right.
Stand for any questions.
This is Edgar Cruz portion of the receipt.
No, I understand that, but there's a certain amount of top gross receipts. So I just see the project is in Loveington.
It's a point of sale.
Is it?
So, so it's point of service. Point of sale. So since the new Mexico state has changed all that crap up for us.
Should be here.
That's what I would be. So that would be different.
Well, the problem is, in reality, it's probably going to be capped. I mean, we do.
What point of sale would be selling it to the city?
The point of service. Okay, this will probably be a good question.
It's just a good for late today, but yeah, I think right now. Why would we be paying ourselves? That was just something I thought of.
City man, that'd be something you can relay to us at later day.
Yes, sir.
If you get it clarified.
Okay.
Any other questions? Jen.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio.
Yes.
Mr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Y, yes. Mary Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion for resolution 2023 dash 006 approval for restaurant beer line license for most.
There we have motion second. We present a description. Anything further from the commission? Jen.
Commissioner Y, yes. Commissioner Jamie.
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio.
Yes.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Mary Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023 dash 007 approval of bid for infinite amount of drug and alcohol testing.
Yeah, we have a motion second. But it's Jen.
We need to receive two bids. One from Vanguard and one from DSI that has locations in Hobbs.
Thank you, Marcus.
Yes. The low bid was actually DSI by just a couple of dollars. For certain unemployment, drug and alcohol testing.
That's a dollar. For tests?
For for those two tests that we do, we do the drug and the alcohol. And it's about $2 cheaper.
How many do we do a year approximately?
So now that we're hiring.
Okay.
But the thing is, we just talked to, now who is the lady? Ma'am, what is her position?
Her name is Hannah Chrisco. She's the procurement trainer for the state.
Yeah. And she told, she told Lisa that you could approve both of them.
True.
So that would give us some more flexibility as far as going over to Hobbs or just having the testing down locally.
Convenience.
Yeah.
If you're looking at hiring someone from Hobbs, they can go to that facility and not have to drive over here to here. So would that be your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, as long as it's okay with the procurement. Expert, you know, I would say go there.
You know, I think sometimes I understand us in business and Hobbs, but I think even though it's a $2 difference, if you send someone over there, you pay them to drive over there, you pay them to drive back, average plus fuel plus whatever, unless they're doing on the wrong time, you know, that $2 disappears quick. Yeah, so I think it would better to just have them in Loveington business by the time you average all the other costs it takes in place. That $2 disappears quick, that $2 savings.
I would also mention that if one of my officers gets into an accident at two or three o'clock in the morning, we have to come out, drive that officer to get tested. So Vanguard will come out here and we've got it in 10 minutes. Otherwise, we'd have to take an hour or so back and forth to Hobbs again.
Yes.
Company is that. The second company would vote to the C. Yes. It's something that.
They're, they're, they provide.
So we wouldn't have to drive down to Hobbs.
No.
Like there's that same services. But if you jump the bench.
I know, ten of those is just inside. And that doesn't also account for your every month when you have to do your regular testings and people have to go down. I mean, we do three or four every month. All right. And plus, what about your grocery seat test? If we do it in Hobbs, does the GRD go to Hobbs?
No, we are definitely not. Okay, we are, I believe, by, we're going to accept Vanguard, Vanguard, and and that will be the one that we, we as the city send them to. But I was just thinking, that convenience, if there was somebody in Hobbs.
Yes.
You wouldn't have to make that trip. So we can approve both of them with their stated rates as vendors and just use as, I don't know who is the one that would.
Generally, from a management standpoint, you would say. Because we have cost that.
Would you have Vanguard be your primary?
Primary.
I would say you have to approve. DSI or.
I know what I thought.
Because you need to have the loads better for your job.
Based on that.
I don't think we have total load spread.
Yes. There's an RF. An RF. Way for B is. Yeah.
From RF. We've gone to, we've gone to.
Well, I think there's other things that lie you have to consideration, just like we talked about, the extra costs and expenses and and those types of things. It seems like the easy solution is just approve both. And then given the circumstances, if we have an employee that, you know, lives in Hobbs or a prospective employee that wants to go to Hobbs office, that's fine. But I think the other things are valid considerations. But like I said, the easiest thing is just approve both.
No, I get it. You did it.
Yeah. So we can remember to include Vanguard and DSI medical services to the motion wherever I hear. We'll retry that. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023 dash 007 approval of bid for infinite quantity drug and alcohol testing, approving Vanguard and DSI medical services.
Thanks. We have a motion in second on that. Any further discussion? Jen.
Commissioner Trivio.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Y, yes. Mr. Danny.
Yes.
Mary Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make motion for resolution 2023 dash 008 approval of senior citizen advisory board appointments. Mary McPurrie, Mary James and Tim Woodson.
Okay, sorry. Well, I mean, new year, new whatever.
Whatever.
Okay. All right, we we have a motion to basically appoint Mary James, Mary McPurrie and Tim Boydston for the three spots. Is that correct? Is that what you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, second discussion. I mean, Jen.
Mr. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Trivio.
Yes.
Mr. Y, yes. Mary Roberts.
Yes. Okay.
Making motion to.
Okay. All right, there are motion in seconds to.
Who's the 20? Okay, so that's covered, that's for in car cameras. And that's covered by Maddox and the county. Yep, and then there's one other item I wanted to point out on page 10. $23,000 to sell for builders. That's, that's a lot of things that you saw with my account. And you have a C for $5,000 payments to various agencies. And it says opioid settlement fund. That's paid through the state of New Mexico that the city manager asked you to disperse. We couldn't use it, they're very strict on helping use it. So we gave it to the Phoenix House. That was never the C center. So you see four or $5,000 payments, but that's from the state of Mexico.
Well, that's a pump and equipment. It's wastewater oil pump ticket that was not turned in. Just wondering what the.
Yes, it was the pastor invoice that wasn't for him.
Vendor 14004 quadrant leasing. There's two payments for the same amount.
That's the postage machine and it comes half gallon of water and half gallon of. Yeah, when you see the commissioner, it shows they come out to every fund. Give it equal amounts, like one will fund as water, one.
I think we talked about that.
Yes.
Cardinal laboratories. Vendor 10403. It says wastewater lab testing from 322 to $13,678. When was that period of time? When was that? During the time, how many months?
This is from March to November.
That's testing the lab, Gary, right?
Yeah, the Marison sons, street pitch railroad crossing, two exact bills also.
Well, that was, that was, we paid for Marison, so we had to take them, and they're going to refund us, but reimburse us half of it back, but we had to pay the full wheels.
This was the railroad.
The railroad will reimburse, I'm sorry, not the Marison.
Second, we got money. Did that, that, that one come from the?
Yeah, I'm going to write about this. Did you get that, David? Are you sure the microphone got that? Anything further, commissioners? All right. Oh, okay. We're going to make. Okay, Jen.
Commissioner Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Y, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Travio.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go into close session for session ten, that fifteen, that one NSA nineteen seventy-eight subsection H two regarding limited personnel matters by our chief and subsection H eight regarding the purchase, acquisition, lease, disposal, disposition of real property or water rights.
We have motion in second. This will be our final, actually, we'll be back in twelve, but everybody leave it anyway. I'd say you're welcome to leave. They're out of here.
I will.
Shannon.
Mr. Y.
Mr. Y.
Go home. Oh, yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah.